Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to an end. If you'd all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilwoman Carr, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You need to start saying yourself to do it.
Okay, I'll start it myself.
All right, yeah.
Derek, you want to kick us off here, please?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Here.
Councilman Purdon?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Simmons?
Here.
Councilwoman Corey?
Here.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Present.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Present.
Okay, wonderful. Now Derek, if you could kick us off, please.
Hey, the first item you have is a variance request on Hickory Island. Go ahead and swear, Ms. Specter and staff. Please raise your right hand. Do you have it? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, thank you.
We have... I have a presentation. Not that, though. There it is. And does this work to move it forward?
Yes, there should be a switcher there.
Is it coming up here, or...
Hop up right there.
Because it's back there, but...
There we go.
We're still working out the glitches, sorry.
Everyone gets one free vote for that.
Yeah.
I'll take it. And how does this... Oh, before. Turning it on, maybe? Is there a button on here to move it forward and back, though? I can see the pointer, but not the... So I can't do it. Okay. Good to know. All right. I apologize for technical difficulties. Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Specter. I am an attorney with Redstone &amp; Andrus. I am here on behalf of the applicant, McHugh Group, R-E-L-P. We are here today to request a street and water body setback to allow for the construction of a new code-compliant home in place of the existing home that was built back in the 1950s. Before discussing this specific request, I wanted to provide you with an overview of the property and its location for ease of reference. I also did want to mention that while the property is owned by an entity, it will actually be used for Mr. McHugh's personal home. He is a longtime resident, and his family are longtime residents of Benita Springs. As you'll see here, the property is located at Hickory Boulevard shortly after it transitions from Benita Bay Boulevard. Though it is a smaller lot, it is actually a lot and a half as created by the Benita Beach First Edition subdivision plat. There is currently a single-family home located on the property. It is zoned residential, single-family, RS1, and has a future land use designation of moderate-density residential, which are the zoning and future land use designations for most of the surrounding properties, as evidenced by the maps. So you can see the map labeled "land use" shows you the current home. The zoning shows you the residential, single-family zoning all around the property, which is highlighted by a red star. And then you have the future land use, which the red star also notates where the home is currently located. Next slide, please. This is an aerial of the property. The residential lots on the east side of Hickory were all created by the same plat. And as you can see, the property in question is one of the smallest and most shallow lots in the area. Next slide, please. This is a closer view of the property so that you can see the location of the current home. I also want to point out that the property to the north is identified as Park B. It is city park space across from the city beach access two, but is fully vegetated and for the most part underwater due to the lack of an adequate seawall. I would also call your attention to the location of the house on the lot to the south of the subject property. This will be addressed towards the end of the presentation. Next slide, please. This is the Benita Beach Edition First Edition subdivision plat. I've highlighted Park B in yellow, and the property in question is outlined in red. As was mentioned earlier, the subject property is one of the most shallow lots created by the plat. Next slide, please. The slide provides you with a close-up of current survey of the property so that you can see just how shallow it is. While it is 75 feet wide as a result of being a lot and a half, the distance to the lot line is only 65 feet. When taking the average of the distance to the mean high-water line on both the north and south property line, the property is only 71 feet deep. Next slide. In getting to the specific request, we are asking for a reduction in the street setback from 25 feet to 20 feet, and a reduction in the water body setback from 25 feet to 15 feet. This will allow for construction of a replacement structure that meets current building codes and FEMA regulations. While a request originally made referenced to a street setback for a corner lot is determined that this is not necessary because Park B is actually treated as a parcel and as such a side setback rather than a street setback is applicable. We will be meeting the side setback requirements, so no variance is needed. Next slide. Here we have a comparison of what currently exists as compared to the current code requirements, and then a comparison of what we are requesting also as compared to the current code requirements. As you will note, we are essentially asking to move the home away from the water body and closer to the street. But the overall net will actually be positive, given that the house will be more than six feet further from Fish Trap Bay and only five feet closer to Hickory Boulevard. Next slide, please. This is a comparison of where the home currently sits and where the new home will be constructed. It demonstrates what was laid out in the previous slide, that essentially we're just moving the home away from Fish Trap Bay and towards Hickory Boulevard. Next slide, please. The request is consistent with the applicable provisions of the Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan in that there will be no increase in density, and the home there will be constructed will be a traditional two-story, single-family home over parking that will not exceed the 35-foot height restriction. Next slide, please. In going through the applicable land development code provisions, the request is applicable... I'm sorry, is appropriate as all variance criteria has been met. First, there are, in fact, exceptional or extraordinary conditions that are inherent to the property in question. It is one of the most shallow lots in the area, and its size and configuration make it impossible to meet the requirements applicable to a standard lot for which the adopted setbacks are intended. These exceptional conditions are not the result of any action on the owner's part. Rather, the home was constructed in the 1950s and was conforming at the time. It is, however, no longer compliant as a result of code and FEMA regulation changes. These changes have made it impossible to repair the home, with the only option being to reconstruct it. Next slide, please. The variance is the minimum variance that will allow for the construction of a new home that complies with FEMA regulations, which will replace the current non-conforming structure. The new home will be in line with the newer homes that have been built in place of earlier constructed dwellings. Furthermore, there will be no impact on the public welfare if the variance request is granted. Next slide. The chart at the top of the slide is actually a continuation from the previous bullet point. As noted on that slide, the setbacks included in the variance requests are lesser than those granted for the lot immediately to the south, which I had pointed out at the beginning of the presentation. When the variance was granted by Lee County in 1989, the then owners of the property were given permission to build the home only five feet from Fish Trap Bay, whereas we are asking to be able to set the home back 15 feet. The owners to the south were also given permission to construct the home only 15 feet from Hickory Boulevard, while we are only asking for a 20-foot setback. A general ordinance amendment would not be appropriate in this instance because the homes created by the Benita Beach First Edition subdivision plat are of such varying depths that it would be impossible to draft a provision that could be applied universally. In summary, the request is the minimum needed to construct a code-compliant home, and the home that will be constructed will actually have greater setbacks overall as compared to the existing home. Based on the foregoing, we would ask that you grant the requested street and water body setback variances. That's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions for me, I will welcome them.
Great, thank you very much. Counsel, any questions, or Laura?
The Park B, that's owned by the city?
Yes.
Do they... Do we keep it up nicely? Are we okay there?
Right now, it's just...
Doesn't look so good, does it?
Well, you wouldn't be able to tell that it's a park. It's just vegetated. It's across from beach access two.
I would see probably this neighbor as adding to the community and helping us make Hickory Island beautiful. So I have no issue, and I say...
Could we have the staff report?
Yeah. I just... Counsel, any other questions? Okay? Yeah. Chris, I'm sorry, do you have a question?
It's on page five of the...
Yeah, but I want them to present it.
Oh.
Okay. I thought that that's what we were trying to do, have both sides.
No, no problem. Can you load the staff?
You can summarize it.
Presentation? I'll summarize it real quick. The owner came to community development and said, "I'd like to build onto this house." And we said, "You really can't do that because with FEMA regulations, what you want to do, you've got to raise it, you've got to do all these other things to bring into compliance." And so it became apparent that that was really a non-starter. They got with their contractor, and they came to us and said, "Look, for waterfront property, to build this little tiny house with this little envelope, it doesn't make any sense, and everybody else has got variances up and down the street." So we looked at the process, we worked with them, and we said, "You know, you can meet your seven-and-a-half-foot sides because it's a lot and a half wide, but the depth is so shallow, we need to protect the bay." One of the problems with pushing a house against the bay is in anticipation of sea level rise and other things that becomes problematic. So bringing the house in off the bay was to protect the bay. One of the considerations for allowing a 20-foot front yard setback instead of 25 is that typically we see a 25-foot setback on right-of-ways that are 50 feet wide with two lanes of asphalt. Hickory Boulevard is a 100-foot wide right-of-way with two lanes of asphalt, so you'd never even notice the difference, and it's not a safety concern. That being said, the applicant worked, came up with a plan, staff is supportive of the plan. When we went in front of the planning commission, they voted against it.
The zoning board, they did not vote...
Zoning board.
They failed to pass. It was a split.
It failed to pass. And the reason it failed to pass, there were several on the board who felt that the city should have just adopted a general regulation so these things wouldn't have to go back for variances. The problem is, as Attorney Inspector said, it's very, very difficult. This is a 1941 plat. This is a plat not only prior to zoning and land use planning, it is a plat that was actually prior to the current plating codes. And so this is non-conforming in every sense of... That you can imagine. And so one of the things that we've looked at is just what makes sense.
Jay, when you say it's not conforming in all the ways you can imagine...
It legally exists, but it doesn't meet all the depth requirements that we would require of a single-family lot to have these days.
That you require today, not in 1950.
1941 is when it was platted.
Gotcha.
And so, you know, we have this situation several times in a lot of areas around the city where, generally speaking, they're too narrow. Generally speaking, lots need to be 75 feet wide, and we have a lot of 50-foot lots. And within our code, we have a provision for that to adjust the side lot lines and leave the front and rear the way they are. In a handful, maybe even as many as 30 or 40 lots on Hickory, you have these situations where, when they were platted, they were platted from the right-of-way of Hickory to the bay. And in some instances, they never even gave a dimension, it just says "to the bay," because there's mangroves, and nobody wanted to go back there and fight mosquitoes or anything, and so they created these lots. So we have these substandard lots, and Lee County, before the city incorporated, historically let them build right on the water, you could fish off your back porch. Well, we realized that those were some mistakes we probably shouldn't perpetuate. And then, of course, we have the FEMA issue, where the FEMA elevation has changed, and that's a very important thing citywide for us, because bringing things to compliance helps the entire city with why they pay for their FEMA insurance. And so this is one of these situations where staff felt inappropriate to give them the minimum setback, five off the rear, five off the front, basically. The very minimum setback that they could accommodate what they want to do, that doesn't have an impact on their neighbors, and we were favored. Now, several of the neighbors came out, they were concerned about some drainage issues, and we explained to them that with the newly passed drainage ordinances, those would be taken care of. And they were actually in favor of it. And like I said, several of the properties there actually had gotten variances through Lee County, which allowed it to be closer to the road and closer to the water. So there's where we are. Staff is in support of this.
I just have one question. Is there any consideration for something that should be done on the bay side as you move closer to the bay, like protecting the shoreline there or anything? Do you do that at all?
That is one of the things that I believe is in their plan, and I'll have them address it, is that they're going to riprap that, because we don't allow seawall on the bay by city ordinance. So they will be bringing some riprap in.
Why is that?
It has to do more to do with the environmental concept, that if you put the seawall in, you're not going to get the mangrove growth, where the mangroves will grow into the riprap. And once the mangroves are there, the shore is even more stabilized. And so that's the reason for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Counsel, anything else? Or any other questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to read the title of the zoning ordinance and then open it up to public comment.
Thank you, Derek.
This is a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, approving a variance from sections 4-1893 and 4-1894 of the land development code, requiring a 25-foot setback from adjacent rights-of-way and a 25-foot setback from water bodies to permit a single-family dwelling unit at 27733 Hickory Boulevard, Benita Springs, Florida, 34134 zip code, and providing for an effective date.
Okay. Public comment? Not a creature was stirring, not even a mouse. Okay?
I'll make a motion to pass.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve and a second? Any further discussion, Counsel? Or anybody? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Great. Great job, everybody. Thank you. Good work.
Thank you, Counsel. Maybe before going on to the next case, I'd like to address something that if you saw in the Board of Zoning Appeal minutes for the last case, there was a question by those members who voted against the project indicating that they had concerns about hearing variances with respect to an issue that seems to be pervasive on the island, and whether or not, as is one of the conditions and criteria that was addressed by Ms. Specter, whether this is something that should be addressed at the council level with a new code revision. Now, staff and I are pretty much in agreement that it would be difficult to draft something, especially when you have that kind of active and changed shoreline for the whole of Hickory Island. At the time, I think, a member, Kenikowski, who was on the zoning board, also agreed that it would be very difficult to do so. That being said, this is now, I think, the second variance request we have had, where there has been a significant number of the board members and the zoning board who voted against it on the concept that they should even consider it. So what I had sort of talked to some of them about is bringing that to your attention and getting direction from the city council whether we should be looking at changing the code, or that you would like to have the zoning board continue to look at these issues on a case-by-case basis, being that, per your decision criteria, they are unique and extraordinary conditions. That, I think, would give the zoning board more comfort for the entire board to vote in favor or against based on the actual applications rather than the policy matter of whether the code should be changed. So I'm just looking for a little bit of direction from you so I can report back to the zoning board.
Let's see. Draw something.
I'm sorry, are you...
Let's go... We'll start with Amy and go down the tape.
If I follow what you said, Derek, because these cases are relatively unique, each one is a different situation, it would be very difficult to have a concerted general change in the land development code to handle this. So I do think that another body, certainly the zoning board, I think is the proper one, should consider the nuances of this, because you have to put it in context. I mean, even the things that Jay brought up, I think, was very helpful, and that was the kind of thing that should appropriately be discussed at the zoning board. So I think we should continue along that same process and just reinforce that to them, that we would ask them to sort of stretch themselves a little bit and to handle that. That would be my preference.
Jesse?
I tend to agree with Amy in the sense that I really like them to look at each one of these individually due to the unique circumstances of each one. You know, I hate voting against them, because obviously, you know, to them, I'm sure they don't like it, but to me, I mean, this was... I don't want to say it was a no-brainer. If you're a stickler for details and you don't want it to move the four inches, fine, but there was no loss in any way, shape, or form to the community. Staff agreed with that. There was a report that showed that. There's no environmental issue that's going on there. And I understand, they're detailed people, and they're supposed to look at it detail-wise, but, I mean, possibly consider other factors. Look, if this is going to create an issue where all of the townspeople in Benita are going to come and line up City Hall and have an issue with it, fine, but if it's a situation where it can be kind of a common-sense solution, you know, two inches this way or four inches that way, as long as we aren't having some kind of great harm, I don't really see the sense in changing the code, and I think it's going to be more problematic if we do that. So I would like to leave the code as it is, keep having them look at it, but look at these things more holistically than just strictly by one inch here or two is against the rules so we can't.
Laura?
I liked what you said, the second one.
Second time?
So, option B. And, you know, because I think what I'm hearing is that the zoning board wants it to be something like, I don't know, if you adopt a pet, you have to have the pet spayed it. So do that. Don't have exceptions out there. Like, if you adopt a pet from Georgia, you know, what do you do? So that... At least, that's some of the things that I...
In the zoning board's defense, the five criteria they look at and you look at in adopting the variance, one of them, the very last one, and I'll read it out loud, is the condition or situation of the specific piece of property or the intended use of the property for which the variance is sought is not of a general or reoccurring nature so as to make it more reasonable and practical to amend the ordinance. So what they're saying is, "We've done this 20 times on Hickory Island. It appears to be a reoccurring issue. Maybe it is one that should be considered for a broader policy change." We've looked at it, and because, as you saw on the map, these properties are very unique, they're designed well before any existing, you know, regulatory environments, at a time where the lot lines and stuff don't even necessarily match up to the ground conditions now or then. We feel that they are still so unique that it is difficult for us to come up with some form of overlay to a deal with it.
So they still have to come in front of the zoning board?
Yes.
So, I don't know. I would make it just easier for people and for the zoning...
Thank you. Thank you, Laura. Chris?
I agree with Laura. I think if there's a way that they can treat these as sort of a... Use the precedence of the last 20 variances that have been granted to expedite the process so that, you know, this thing doesn't take the time and effort to go through a formal zoning variance, then I would be fine with it. Because we sort of know what the answer is going to be when we get through the end of the day.
Thanks, Chris. Mike?
My feelings are, you know, exactly how you stated. It is a very unique situation. There are many lots out there, so there are multiple unique lots. So I think they should look at it. I don't think they should vote "no" on something because they feel that it's a recurrence. When it came to the cell towers, they had the same issue. It's a reoccurring issue, and rightly so. They asked us to look at changing those rules, and we did. But I wish they would just ask us without, you know, feeling that they had to vote "no" on something that, you know, really should have been done, so...
Thanks, Mike. Fred?
The only possible solution I see that you might be able to do is maybe if staff feels that it's in the public's best interest to approve it, that on the unique things of these setbacks on Hickory Island and these old plats, that we could work it out where they could... We could bypass them and come right here, if that can be done. And that's up to Derek to figure out whether it can be done. Other than that, then I agree with those that feel that they should hear it, but it's a... And I don't really think they should vote "no" because it's a recurring kind of request.
Yeah, and I would echo those statements about the recurring, because everything is unique. It certainly isn't one-size-fits-all, and I would just add respectfully, sincerely respectfully, that we ask the zoning board to also review the code of professional responsibility, so... And treatment of their board members. So, thank you.
Yes, Jay?
Mayor, if I could. Currently, and this would not solve every situation, but it could solve a 50% or better of it, maybe, in that currently our code is written so that when you have a substandard lot, you do 10% of the width... We're talking about width now. You do 10% of the width at a minimum of five feet. So usually, it's a seven-and-a-half-foot setback. If it's a 70-foot lot, it's a seven-foot setback. If it's a 60-foot lot, it's a six-foot setback. And that's based upon 10% of the width of the lot being a setback to each side. If you look at the standard code, it's 25-foot in the front on a 100-foot lot, that'd be 25%, 20-foot in the rear, 20%. If you were inclined to, you could give staff the authority to use that ratio, and if they couldn't meet that ratio, they would still come in for a variance. And that would be the only way I could see. It would be something simple, and maybe that simplicity would encourage them to go the extra design effort to make it fit that, so they wouldn't have to go through the variance process.
Okay, so what I think I'm hearing from the counsel on all report, and I'll work with Jason more on this, is that if we can come up with something, maybe a safe harbor, we'll go ahead and do that. In the meantime, we'd ask the zoning board to continue to look at these and not vote against them until or if the council doesn't come up with a policy. So I think that's the reasonable course of action. If we can come up with something, we will, and then those ones who don't fall within that safe harbor would be those outliers that I think require that additional review.
I see a lot of nodding heads already.
Sounds good to me.
Is everybody okay?
That's putting a butt, baby, isn't it?
Okay. Thank you, Derek.
Okay. The next case is Benita Grand Residential Plan Development, and I'll just go ahead and read the zoning ordinance now. "A zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, rezoning 1,342 plus or minus acres approximately three-quarter mile north of East Terry Street and east of Benita Grand Drive from industrial plan development, IPD, and agricultural, AG2, to residential plan development, providing for transition from existing mining uses to residential development, providing for an effective date." And Mr. Dupu, and anyone else who wishes to speak? Were you sworn in earlier?
I was not.
Okay. Would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is David Dupu. I've been before you before on this case, so I'm going to try and be as brief as possible and simply tell you also that we have Neil Montgomery, the legal representative of the applicant, here with us today, as well as Bill Morris, who's a civil engineer of record for the mine out there at the moment, and the applicants themselves are here in the audience today as well. Next slide, please. As I said, I'm going to try and be as brief as possible on this. I would request that the prior presentations, testimony, and application materials be part of the record for this. Subject property, as you know, is located at the extreme northeast corner of the city. It's approximately two miles north of Benita Beach Road. It's accessed via Benita Grand Drive, which forms its westerly boundary, and it's just north of Terry Street. Next slide, please. North on this slide is to the left, this is the subject property itself. Part of it is zoned IPD, part of it is zoned AG2. As you can see on the zoning map, virtually all of the property surrounding the subject property is zoned AG2. There is a small section that's zoned MH2. Most of the property around it is either vacant or agricultural. On the north side, we have the Edison Farms property, which is now in public ownership and scheduled for preservation. On the east side, and to some extent on the south side of the subject property, is the Crew, the Corkscrew Regional Ecologic Watershed Preservation Property, which is also basically in public ownership. Next slide, please. Recently, you've approved the IPD extension on the subject property, as well as the plan amendment to conservation fringe for the subject property. Next slide, please.
I mean, even the things that was brought, that Jay brought up, I think was very helpful. And that was the kind of thing that should appropriately be discussed at the zoning board. So I think we should continue along the, that same process and just reinforce that to them, that we would ask them to sort of stretch themselves a little bit and to handle that. That would be my preference.
Jesse?
I tend to agree with Amy in the sense that I really like them to look at each one of these individually due to the, the unique circumstances of each one. You know, I hate voting against them because obviously, you know, to them, I'm sure they don't like it. But to me, I mean, this was, I don't want to say it was a no-brainer. If you're a stickler for details and you don't want it to move the four inches, fine. But there was no loss in any way, shape, or form to the community. Staff agreed with that. There was a report that showed that. There's no environmental issue that's going on there. And I understand they're detailed people and they're supposed to look at it detail-wise, but I mean, possibly consider other factors. Look, if this is going to create an issue where all of the townspeople in Bonita are going to come and line up City Hall and have an issue with it, fine. But if it's a situation where it can be kind of a common sense solution, you know, two inches this way or four inches that way, as long as we aren't having some kind of great harm, I don't really see the sense in changing the code. And I think it's going to be more problematic if we do that. So I would like to leave the code as it is, keep having them look at it, but look at these things more holistically than just strictly by one inch here or two is against the rules, so we can't.
Laura?
I liked what you said, the second one.
Second time?
(laughing) Option B.
Option B.
And, you know, because I, I think what I'm hearing is that the zoning board wants it to be something like, I don't know, if you adopt a pet, you have to have the pet spayed it. Like, so do that. Don't have exceptions out there. Like, if you adopt a pet from Georgia, you know, what do you do? So that, they, at least that's some of the things that I would...
In the zoning board's defense, the five criteria they look at and you look at in adopting the variance, one of them, the very last one, and I'll read it out loud, is the condition or situation of the specific piece of property or the intended use of the property for which the variance is sought is not of a general or reoccurring nature so as to make it more reasonable and practical to amend the ordinance. So what they're saying is, we've done this 20 times on Hickory Island. It appears to be a reoccurring issue. Maybe it is one that should be considered for a broader policy change. We've looked at it and because, as you saw on the map, these properties are very unique. They're designed well before any existing, you know, regulatory environments at a time where the lot lines and stuff don't even necessarily match up to the ground conditions now or then.
Right.
We feel that they are still so unique that it is difficult for us to come up with some form of overlay to a deal with it.
So they still have to come in front of the zoning board?
Yes.
So, I don't know. I would make it just easier for people and for the zoning.
Thank you. Thank you, Laura. Chris?
I agree with Laura. I think if there's a way that they can treat these as sort of a, use the precedence of the last 20 variances that have been granted to expedite the process so that, you know, this thing doesn't take the time and effort to go through a formal zoning variance, then I'm, I would be fine with it. Because we sort of know what the answer is going to be when we get through the end of the day.
Thanks, Chris. Mike?
My feelings are, you know, exactly how you stated. It is a very unique situation. There are many lots out there, so there are multiple unique lots. So I, I think they should look at it. I don't think they should vote no on something because they feel that it's a recurrence. When it came to the cell towers, they had the same issue. It's a reoccurring issue. And rightly so, they asked us to, to look at changing those rules and, and we did. But I wish they would just ask us without, you know, feeling that they had to vote no on something that, you know, really should have been done, so.
Thanks, Mike. Fred?
The only possible solution I see that you might be able to do is maybe if staff feels that it, it's in the public's best interest to approve it, then on the, the unique things of these setbacks on Hickory Island and these old plaques, that we could work it out where they could, we could bypass them to come right here. If that can be done. And that's up to Derek to figure out whether it can be done. Other than, other than that, then I agree with every, those that feel that they should hear it. But it's a, and I don't really think they should vote no because it's a recurring kind of request.
Yeah, and I would echo those statements about the recurring because everything is unique. It certainly isn't one size fits all. And, and I would just add respectfully and sincerely respectfully, that we ask the zoning board to also review the code of professional responsibility. So, and treatment of their board members. So, thank you.
Yes, Jay?
Mayor, if I could. Currently, and this would not solve every situation, but it could solve a 50% or better of it maybe. In that, currently, our code is written so that when you have a substandard lot, you do 10% of the width, we're talking about width now. You do 10% of the width at a minimum of five feet. So usually, it's a seven and a half foot setback. If it's a 70-foot lot, it's a seven-foot setback. If it's a 60-foot lot, it's a six-foot setback. And that's based upon 10% of the width of the lot being a setback to each side. If you look at the standard code, it's 25-foot in the front on a 100-foot lot, that'd be 25%. 20-foot in the rear, 20%. If you were inclined to, you could give staff the authority to use that ratio. And if they couldn't meet that ratio, they would still come in for a variance. And that would be, the only way I could see it would be something simple. And maybe that simplicity would encourage them to go the extra design effort to make it fit that so they wouldn't have to go through the variance process.
Okay, so what I, what I think I'm hearing from the, the council on our report, and I'll work with Jason more on this, is that if we can come up with something, maybe a safe harbor, we'll go ahead and do that. In the meantime, we'd ask the zoning board to continue to look at these and, and not vote against them until or if the council doesn't come up with a policy. So I think that, I think that's the reasonable course of action. If we can come up with something, we, we will. And then that, those ones who don't fall within that safe harbor would be those outliers that I think require that additional review.
I see a lot of nodding heads.
Sounds good to me.
Is everybody okay?
That's putting a butt baby, isn't it?
Okay. Thank you, Derek.
Okay, the next case is Bonita Grand Residential Plan Development. And I'll just go ahead and read the zoning ordinance now. The zoning ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, rezoning 1,342 plus, plus or minus acres approximately three-quarter mile north of East Terry Street and east of Bonita Grand Drive from industrial plan development, IPD and agricultural AG2, to residential plan development, providing for transition from existing mining uses to residential development, providing for an effective date. And Mr. Depew and anyone else who wishes to speak, were you sworn in earlier?
I was not.
Okay. Now, would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is David Depew. I've been before you before on this case, so I'm going to try and be as brief as possible. And simply, I'll tell you also that we have Neil Montgomery, the legal representative of the applicant, here with us today, as well as Bill Morris, who's a civil engineer of record for the mine out there at the moment. And the applicants themselves are here in the audience today as well. Next slide, please. As I said, I'm going to try and be as brief as possible on this. I would request that the prior presentations, testimony, and application materials be part of the record for this. Subject property, as you know, is located at the extreme northeast corner of the city. It's approximately two miles north of Bonita Beach Road. It's accessed via Bonita Grand Drive, which forms its westerly boundary. And it's just north of Terry Street. Next slide, please. North on this slide is to the left, this is the subject property itself. Part of it is zoned IPD, part of it is zoned AG2. As you can see on the zoning map, virtually all of the property surrounding the subject property is zoned AG2. There is a small section that's zoned MH2. Most of the property around it is either vacant or agricultural. On the north side, we have the Edison Farms property, which is now in a public ownership and scheduled for preservation. On the east side, and to some extent on the south side of the subject property, is the Crew, the Corkscrew Regional Ecologic Watershed Preservation Property, which is also basically in public ownership. Next slide, please. Recently, you've approved the IPD extension on the subject property, as well as the plan amendment to conservation fringe for the subject property. Next slide, please. Project request is a rezoning of 1,342.6 acres to residential plan development, or RPD. The request would permit a mix of single-family and multifamily units, up to 700 total dwelling units. Will allow the mining to continue, ultimately being phased out as the residential units come online, with conservation and preservation areas being maintained and the lakes themselves being reclaimed. Next slide, please. This is the master concept plan. You can see the green areas, which are the preservation areas. They are going to be preserved, maintained, conserved in perpetuity. The blue areas, obviously, are the lakes. The gray area with the line through, the darker gray line through the middle of it, is the only area where the residences are going to be constructed. And then in the northwest corner of the site is the site for the, ultimately, the public use of the park. And you see, the access is along the west side, which is an extension of Bonita Grand Drive. Next slide, please. In terms of the master concept plan and the land use areas, you can see the breakdown here. I would simply point out that even excluding the mine lakes, there's 60% of this site is going to be open, open space. With you, when you include the mine lakes, there's around 80% of the site that is going to be open space. So this is the essence of clustering development. It allows the continuation of the conservation and preservation uses on the areas that are located for green. And it preserves the open space and recreational amenities that are associated with the lakes and the other surrounding collar on the lakes. Next slide, please. In terms of project benefits, the benefits include redevelopment of the industrial site for residential use, coupled with advanced reclamation and restoration elements. Beyond that, which is currently mandated by FDEP, because it includes not only the reclamation of the lakes, but also the nature of the, the reclamation elements that are associated with the development itself and the development of the property. The city's population growth will be supported, and future recreation demands will be met through the provision of the lake-based public park. And the design criteria associated with the conditions of the rezoning that mirror the conditions that are found in the conservation land use fringe category will serve to protect the natural resources. Next slide, please. The conditions, as I understand it, I, I was in a hearing this morning, so I didn't get a chance to read it, but I understand that the condition that was regarded with Lee County Department of Transportation, which was 13B, which we had a little bit of a question about clarification. I believe that's been resolved. And as such, we are in full agreement with the staff conditions that you have as part of the updated staff report. And I don't know if staff's going to address that, but it was simply a matter of clarification on the traffic study and the intersection improvements. Next slide, please. This is the conservation fringe policy. That's the category in which this property development is being proposed. We believe that we have adequately and fully addressed all of the various performance criteria that are found within this policy, and that the request before you was consistent with that policy. Next slide, please. In terms of the city's comprehensive plan, the request promotes responsible development. It protects natural resources. It safeguards the public potable water supplies. It clusters the housing, maintaining open space recreational opportunities and preservation areas. It maintains and enhances the native habitats and the wetlands. And it implements the settlement agreement between the applicant and the city. Next slide, please. The comprehensive plan submitted and the testimony submitted throughout the various hearings on this describes how the proposed rezoning to residential plan development complies with the Bonita plan and the proposed conditions if approved. Master concept plan is consistent with the land development code and implements the performance standards therein. And where deviations have been requested, they are to enhance the conditions of the plan development and promote the public health, safety, and welfare. Next slide, please. Based upon the application, the exhibits, the testimony, it's my professional opinion that the applicant has made a proper application for the rezoning, has met all the applicable goals, objectives, and policies of the plan, is consistent with the requirements found in the city's land development code, has been recommended for approval by the city's staff, as well as the zoning board, and meets the generally accepted planning principles that are associated with cluster development of the sort and the reclamation of mine areas such as this. It is also my professional opinion, the application, the testimony has provided the necessary record that entitles the requested rezoning to an approval. And finally, it's my professional opinion that the proposed rezoning properly seeks, as currently proposed, implement a portion of the settlement agreement reached between the applicant and the city. I might tell you, city council members, I've been involved in a number of reclamation projects around the county. And it's always been my theory that these mines, which provide a very needed resource for the growth that we experience southwest Florida, can be redeveloped into very environmentally responsible, as well as very highly aesthetic developments. And I believe this is going to be one of those very economically successful, highly environmentally responsible, and very aesthetic communities as we move forward. We're here for any questions that the city council might have. Thank you for your attention.
Great, thank you. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I'm good.
You're okay? Laura?
We're going to hold you to it. And I think you're right. It's going to be a good thing in the end.
It's, it's going to be beautiful. If you've, if you've been up to see Wild Blue or Corkscrew Shores, I mean, those are kind of nascent examples of what I think this is going to be. This is going to be a beautiful, beautiful project.
Good, thank you.
Chris?
I'm fine.
Okay, Mike?
Ready for staff.
Okay. Fred?
I'm good.
Okay. Jacqueline Gensen. Nice to see you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council. Thank you for the record, Jacqueline Gensen. I'll wait for the presentation to load. Thank you. First, just some housekeeping. As you are aware in the packet, we did provide a memo outlining the timeline and the sequencing of events. So I will go over the zoning board summary that took place yesterday and outline those topics that were brought up. But also, just ahead of time, I wanted to let you know, the, the zoning ordinance that was provided as part of your packet, the distinctions between the two is that you'll see the staff report conditions were brought into that ordinance, and there were some strike-throughs and some underlines to go ahead and clarify just the differences that you'll see between the staff report conditions and the draft zoning ordinance as well. Also, as Mr. Depew had said, condition 13B is a condition by Lee County Department of Transportation. The applicant did have some clarification that they were seeking. We worked with Lee County DOT, and they have no objections to the applicant's changes. So we're going to go ahead and incorporate those. Also, there's a reference to deviation 13. In that statement, we referenced the wrong condition. It should be condition 12C. So just to put that on the record. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so this is the staff review team that participated in the review of this petition. With us today, I do have John Dahmer, who's up in the bleachers. We have Laura Gibson, environmental, Tricia Goff, our engineer, Jay Sweet, our planner and a surveyor. And then David Theriak is available to us by phone. Next slide, please. This is the request language. It's slightly modified to the title block, but Mr. Rooney already read this into the record. So, next slide, please. Based on the overview, staff has processed this rezoning action consistent with the settlement agreement, which was agreed to last year. It's also part of your packet. Based on the comprehensive plan, this was adopted last month. It has been transmitted to the state. They did receive it. They deemed the packet complete. And as long as there's no challenge or appeal, it will be effective July 4. So that is new information that we just received today. The rezoning requests, as they had testified, this is the redevelopment of the mine and an agricultural property to transition into residential development. For the zoning board, and again, I apologize, I don't have more detail, but the PowerPoints were due yesterday. We did have the meeting yesterday afternoon. And some of the questions that were brought up or raised by the zoning board was, there was one member that brought up the question of procedural, more of a procedure, and Mr. Rooney might want to chime in a little bit. But there was a question on whether or not they should be reviewing the rezoning petition request since it was a settlement agreement. Should it just go straight to city council? So that was discussed. One of the members had a question regarding the amount of lake excavation that would actually occur. Would it be more or less? There was a question about affordable housing. Would there be affordable housing on the site? There was a question on whether or not they would actually be able to fit 700 units. Did they do some site planning? There was a question about the neighborhood meeting. Their second neighborhood meeting was held on Monday, so there was a question on what came out of that proceeding. There was a question on the lake bank stabilization. There's questions on the cross-sections of the roadways, questions on the reclamation timing and restoration. And those are pretty much the, the larger issues. The recommendation was, there was three that voted in the affirmative and two that abstained from the vote. So if you'd like to go into more detail in that, we'd be happy to do so at the conclusion of the meeting. Next slide, please.
I, oh, I'm sorry.
Two abstained?
No, I thought you were done. Go ahead.
Two members abstained from voting?
Say that again, Jacqueline?
Two members abstained from voting.
Why?
The indication they gave me was that they felt, one, that the, Ms. Craig felt that the, because of the issue of some language in the code regarding settlement agreements, that it was perhaps not proper for the zoning board to weigh in on some, on this item, that it should go directly to city council. The other concern was from Chairman Kurlander regarding the public interest in allowing mining to coexist with residential development. I will say that after the vote, there were some clarifying questions in which Mr. Kurlander indicated, after he got the, the answers to his questions, that he actually would have voted in the affirmative. But we decided just not to, to have a vote again.
So obviously, abstaining is allowed?
Under Florida law, and I did raise this question with them, abstaining is allowed in two circumstances. One, if there is a conflict. They have a personal financial interest in the outcome. Or two, if they have a potential bias, they can, they can exempt. For instance, it's, it's my brother's house is next door to this development. Or I just think it's ugly and I, I would never approve it, no matter what. If there's potential bias, in, in that case, they can abstain. My plan is, I didn't really want to bring this up here, my plan is to go through with the zoning board in the future, some additional guidance, maybe some training on what their roles and responsibilities are, and when there is bias, when there's, when there is conflict, so that these issues don't come up, as with the last item, so that we have a little more direction to them.
So were either one of those thresholds met by the members that abstained?
I, I don't believe that when they abstained, they were thinking of those thresholds in that context.
Okay. So you had, let me back out, because we had one member resign, so that's six. You had two abstentees, so you had four people voting on the issue. How many voted on it?
We had five present. We had one out, six. So three voted in favor and two abstained.
On a board of how many?
Seven.
Seven? Three, three in favor?
Oh, eight, yeah.
And, and Mr. Kurlander said he would have, if questions had been answered, he would have voted in favor.
Correct.
But who was the other person?
Barbara Craig.
And his, he had a personal issue or?
Her concern was that there, there is language in the zoning boards, effectively in their charter, when, what kind of hearings they have, variances, special exceptions, zoning matters. There is a provision in, in the, the code that indicates that certain types of zoning matters do not have to go to the zoning board. They can go directly to the city council. And that, the language under that section, I believe it's 4-131, indicates that certain settlement agreements do not have to go to the zoning board. They can go directly to city council. Now, as I explained at the hearing, that particular provision applies to developments of regional impact. And then, only amendments to developments of regional impact. So whether it was in context or in the particular sentence that she was relying on, it, it had no bearing on, on the hearing.
I appreciate that, but I want to get back to, we have seven members on that board, or should have, right?
Is it seven or six?
Seven.
Seven.
Okay. And you had three vote in the affirmative?
Correct.
Isn't it still statutorily required that it takes four votes?
No. Your, their co, their, their quorum requirements are four members and a simple majority of those present is, is, is enough to pass.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Appreciate that. All right, what's next?
Thank you. So up the slide before you is a summary that Mr. Depew already addressed. So unless there's any other questions, I will move to the next slide. The master concept plan, this also was gone over in detail by the applicant. It's a four-sheet master concept plan with the detail, mainly on the first sheet, and then multiple cross-sections on the next. Next slide, please. This is the master concept plan. And if, I know Mr. Depew went over this more in detail, but it shows you the mine lakes, the preserves, the backbone infrastructure. And the homes will be clustered around the mining lakes and newly created lakes. And then there's areas for amenities. And then the city's future North Lake Park area to the north. Next slide, please. This is the other sheets of the master concept plan that showed the general lot layout, internal road configurations, various cross-sections throughout the development of roadways, and also cross-sections near the perimeter. Next slide, please. And then you have other areas of the development. Again, cross-section details in terms of how these areas would be ultimately developed in their post-mining state. Next slide, please. And then more cross-sections as well. This is all in your exhibit B of your staff report. Next slide, please. Schedule of uses are enumerated in condition 3A. There, there are special supplemental references to agricultural uses, and also the excavation-mining use that you'll see before you. And then the property development regulations, just because there are a variety of lot layouts, we went ahead and attached that as a separate exhibit for clarity. Next slide, please. The schedule of deviations, we went over this very much in detail at the zoning board. Would the board like me to go over each one? Okay. I'm just trying to read everyone. Next slide, please. Deviation three and four. We all, we recommended approval of, of all the deviations, less one. And then two were withdrawn. Next slide, please. So six and seven were withdrawn. Next slide. Eight and nine were approved. Next slide, please. 10 was approved, 11 was denied, but the applicant is comfortable with that recommendation. That's for an extra off-site sign. Next slide, please. Deviation 12 and 13 were also approved. Next slide. And 14 and 15 were also approved, subject to conditions. Next slide, please. Neighborhood compatibility and public participation. There were courtesy mailed notices that were sent. The property was posted. We ran legal advertisements. We did have one property owner contact staff that lived, or has, sorry, owned property in this area. And they did have some questions about access. It is my understanding that the applicant has been in contact with them and that they also attended their Monday night neighborhood meeting. They did not participate in yesterday's meeting, and I have not received any correspondence after that. So I'm hopeful that their questions have been resolved. Next slide, please. For the comprehensive plan and consistency analysis, we do have our report in attachment A enumerating how is consistent with the comprehensive plan amendment that was just passed, and also the other comprehensive plan policies that were also used as the basis for approving the comprehensive plan amendment. And then you also have the applicant's analysis contained in attachment B. Next slide, please. Specifically, we had some other areas of analysis that I just wanted to point out. We had our environmental team, engineering team, and transportation team review the request. So you'll see conditions relative to preserve management, listed species, well-fill monitoring for engineering. We are having some challenges in our newer communities on lake bank stabilization. It's really dealing with the types of soils or the lake fluctuations, so we do have some conditions in there to address that. Also, with transportation, we had our own traffic consultant and also Lee County DOT review the request. And those conditions are enumerated in the staff report and zoning ordinance. Next slide. Again, our analysis is outlined in attachment A, which is pages 116 through 17 on your staff report. Next page. And we recommended approval of conditions. Next slide. These are just the highlights of each condition and what they address. I'm happy to go over any one that you might have questions on. Next slide. And next slide, please.
I just have one question on the duration. The master concept plan would be in existence for a certain amount of time. Is that from when, when does the, the starting point of that?
There's a specific condition to address the duration of rights, because typically, the duration of rights typically starts from the effective date of the ordinance in its five years. Obviously, because this is an active mine, and based on the amendment we approved back in December... in December, the phasing of that mine goes out until 2041. So the normal duration of rights wouldn't be necessarily appropriate in this situation. So understanding that there is a unique condition for the duration of rights, knowing what this, what the existing mine is, and a method for which they could vest the plan, I'm going to say vest, but essentially so the plan does not expire. So there's certain thresholds, and that is in condition, I believe it's five. So depending on which one of these that they fulfill, their master concept plan would not expire.
What page are you looking at?
It was an ongoing collaboration between the applicant and staff.
No, I, I would like to refer to that. What page are you looking at?
Oh, I apologize. It's page five of the draft zoning ordinance. And for the newer members of council, what the duration of rights is, it's the master concept plan that has the expiration date, if you will. That's the document that has the five-year clock. If that plan was to expire, what would happen is the zoning still remains valid, so the zoning ordinance in its entirety remains valid, but what they would have to do is come back through a public hearing process and adopt a new master concept plan and incorporate any changes that may have happened with the comprehensive plan and the LDC.
Counsel?
Motion to pass?
Second.
Been a motion to approve in a second. Counsel, is there any further discussion before we go to public comment? Chris?
It's not so much on this motion, but I would like to, I don't know where to do it, being new to counsel, but I would like to have a discussion, whether it's after this vote, or the next council meeting, or whatever. It seems like we've got some sort of a broken process in terms of, you know, we're trying to rely on the zoning board, yet we have members on the zoning board that feel like they're not, they shouldn't be looking at this type of request. I'd just like to get into a discussion about that.
Could we do that at the next meeting, Chris? Would that be okay?
That'd be fine. I, yeah.
I think that's a great idea, sort of refreshing and going over and having a mini orientation class for the zoning board.
Just like you go through training every year with the League of Cities on a variety of things, they don't go through that, and even if they're, they've all been on it, and they've experienced, and they've been there for years, over time, you know, sometimes you may lose focus a little bit on what some of the other rules that are not what they're used to dealing with. So I think there's value in doing that on a regular basis all the time.
Okay. That's fine.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, so there's been a motion to approve in a second. Is there further discussion from the council or from the public? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. Derek?
That's it, we have nothing more.
Okay. Anything else? Motion to adjourn? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all.
Thanks for being here.